All right, I'd like to call the Economic Development Authority meeting to order. Can we start with roll call, please?
Excuse me, my mic wasn't on. I'm gonna repeat that again. Commissioner Rogg?
Here.
Commissioner Dumalag?
Here.
Commissioner Mohammed?
Here.
Commissioner Brousson?
President.
President Budd?
Here. All right, we have an agenda in front of us. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved, seconded.
Here, it's moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Any conversation? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda is approved. We have some minutes to approve from the EDA meeting of September 2nd. Do I hear a motion?
Move approval with... yeah, move approval, sorry. Just move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from September 2nd. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. Okay, Commissioner Rogg?
No, I'm sorry, it's on the...
Okay, great. So hearing no further comments, all those in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved. We have four items on our EDA consent agenda tonight. Do I have a motion for approval?
I'll move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion?
Yeah, President Budd, just wanted to make a note that the item B is actually in Ward 2, I believe, so I know it was flagged in our notes, but just wanted to flag that for those that are following at home.
Thank you for that clarification. That relates to the Metropolitan Council Pre-Development Grant for Affordable Commercial Spaces in Ward 2. Any other comments on the consent items? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Consent agenda is approved. Tonight for EDA, we have no public hearings, no regular business, no communication. So the meeting will now adjourn and we'll begin our council meeting at 6:15. Thanks.
All right, folks, we will get started on our city council meeting. It's always awkward pause between the EDA and the council, but we have to by law. We can't start before 6:15. So with that being said, let us get started on our city council meeting. Kim, roll call, please.
Councilmember Odwin?
Here.
Councilmember Brousson?
Here.
Councilmember Budd?
Here.
Councilmember Dumalag?
Here.
Councilmember Rogg?
Here.
And Mayor Mohammed?
Here. All right, thank you, folks, for joining us. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance if you can and are able to. All right. Moving on to the approval of the agenda, do I have a motion?
So moved, seconded.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? This agenda is approved. Moving on to the presentations, we have a couple of presentations. The first one is our evergreen recipients and celebrating our evergreen recipients. Mike, I believe that you have a presentation for us, so please come on up and let us celebrate our winners and let's hear.
Thank you, Mayor Mohammed and council members. Mike Baum, the Natural Resources Manager here with the City of St. Louis Park. Each year we do these Evergreen Awards, which is always a fun time, get to go out and see a bunch of beautiful properties that are nominated by our residents. So we have two winners, two properties that have won this year again, and we have two categories, alternate and traditional. And a little bit of information on those, traditional landscape is one that is typically non-native plants, very tight lines, very aesthetics oriented. And then we have our alternative landscapes, which could be, we had some nominees that were, their front yards were very well put together vegetable gardens. We had some, sometimes we get rain gardens and then other times we get just like native plants, very pollinator, wildlife friendly landscapes. So without further ado, I think we'll start going through the slides here. This year we had 15 nominees. I know these are small slides, but I just wanted to show you, we did get a number of nominations this year. Pretty exciting, very happy that we had a mix of commercial and residential and a mix of alternative and traditional. But I think what I'll do is, as I move into the winners, the two different categories, I think I'll have them come stand up here next to me, if you would. So Nancy, if you'd come stand up next to me and we'll go through your, we'll go through your property. So Nancy Wolf is at 4246 Ottawa Avenue South in the Minnetoka Vista neighborhood. And I think we've had a few winners from Minnetoka Vista neighborhood since I've been here in this position. And Nancy has won a couple times.
Yeah.
Maybe three, right? So it's a beautiful property. So just a couple pictures here, looking right at the front of her house from the street side. Again, with these awards, it's all about curb appeal. We don't look into the backyards at all. It's all about what you see from the front of the properties, so. And one thing I really like about Nancy's property, that it's hard to see from the, it's hard to see from the roadside, but you have like an arbor over your front deck that has grapevines on it that you prune back every year and then it becomes a mat.
Don't plant a grapevine.
(laughing) Don't plant a grapevine, she says, but it becomes a shade for her deck. So it's very, very cool. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Yes. If you want to just maybe stand over there and I'll bring up the next group for you guys who would come up, our next winners. We have Lee Conliff and Catherine Dowd from 2845 Inglewood Avenue South, and this is in the Fern Hill neighborhood. And this is our alternative landscape winner, so. And I was told that Lee does most of the gardening, and maybe Catherine's just being humble, but it does sound like Lee really does a lot of the planning over the winter. And he's telling me about all the work he does in this landscape, deadheading, splitting plants, planning on different flowering times, which when we're talking about these alternative landscapes that are pollinator and wildlife friendly, those different flowering times are really important. So I really appreciate the work you two are doing in your property. And this is also a good example of an alternative landscape that uses a lot of native plants for our pollinators and other wildlife, but it also is very clean, it has very clean edges also around the landscape. So, you know, our native plant gardens can sometimes look a little, sometimes people call it a little more messy, but I think they did a really good job of timing out those blooms and organizing in a way that is a great example for people who maybe want a more formal landscape or really wanna also focus on our wildlife. So thank you, Catherine and Lee, for all your hard work on that property.
Thank you.
So at this point, at this time, I'll pass it back over to council and the mayor and if you want to present the awards or...
Thank you, I do have some awards to present, so I'm gonna go up there and present it to you both. All right, before you head out, I know that some of the council members might wanna say a couple of things. I'll start by saying congratulations, big, big congratulations. I will say I do not have the green thumb. I don't. It got lost. My grandma used to be the gardener and the farmer and things like that, and so I'm hoping I can get it back. And anytime you guys wanna do the work on my yard, just neighborly, neighborly, you know, stuff, I'd be happy to have you guys over and give me some pointers and tips. But yeah, with that, any council... yep, go ahead, council member Rogg.
I just love this award. It celebrates something that is seemingly so small, but also so huge in terms of enjoying life and contributing to our neighborhoods and contributing to the natural world through pollinators and all those things. So congratulations, Nancy, Lee, and Catherine. And the reason I was making bunny ears behind those two is that they're good friends from long, long ago. And I just wanna say, I'm sorry that you didn't get to take pictures of the backyard, because the backyard last I saw was 10 times as gorgeous as the front yard. And I think it's true that Lee does most of the work, but Catherine does all the things that allow Lee to have time to do it. So, beautiful, well done. And by the way, if that's messy, I don't know how to describe neat. So congratulations all, and thank you for contributing to the beautification of our community.
True. Any others? Yep, go ahead, council member.
Yeah, no, and congratulations. And yeah, Nancy, we've, I remember door knocking and having a very long conversation, probably longer than what you want a door knocker to have at your door, but about your yard and how beautiful it is. And really, you know, to all three of you, I know gardening brings you joy, but you're also bringing joy to the neighborhood. And it's another way to connect with neighbors, as they're asking questions about, how do you do that pollinator? What's, do you collect seeds? And I hope the answer's yes. And so, so really, really thank you for doing what you can. I know it's something that you're probably all passionate about, but there's a lot of admirers in the city because of the work that you do, so thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, if there's no other council members, I wanna, I will send you guys off with a one big congratulations, thank you again, and I look forward to door knocking over there this coming couple of months, and so, congratulations. And thank you for doing your part in this community. All right. All right, moving on to our proclamations, we have two. The first one will be read by ours truly, Councilmember Tim Brousson. You have the floor.
Thank you very much. This one reads like an attorney wrote it. There's a lot of whereas's in it. I'm an attorney and I try not to put whereas's in my documents, but I'll read it as written. This is the Proclamation for National Disability Employment Awareness Month. Whereas the City of St. Louis Park supports the Minnesota Council on Disability vision of a quote "barrier-free" Minnesota where every person with a disability has full access to all aspects of life," end quote. And whereas the Minnesota State Demographics Center notes that about 595,684 Minnesotans report having a disability with ambulatory disabilities, difficulty walking and climbing stairs being most common. And whereas disability has legal and medical definitions with the American With Disabilities Act defining it legally as a person with a physical or mental impairment that substantially limits one or more major life activity. This includes those who have a record of a disability and those who may not see themselves as having a disability. And whereas being disabled has complex impacts on an individual. Often disabled people and their family have to navigate stigma, legal challenges, benefit systems, and advocating for their rights to access and accommodations. And whereas the legacy of state and federal policies and beliefs about disabled workers is present as evidenced by the, by double the low employment rates as compared to those without disabilities, and the continued fight for disability rights. And whereas individuals with disabilities are highly skilled and valuable contributors to our economy and communities. And whereas St. Louis Park encourages all residents to learn how to build an inclusive community with access and equity for all. Now therefore, let it be known that the mayor and city council of the City of St. Louis Park, Minnesota hereby honor October 6, 2025 as National Disability Employment Awareness Month in our community.
So be it. Thank you, council member. If there's nobody who would like to comment on this, I will move on to the next proclamation. So I have a proclamation, Indigenous People's Day. Whereas Minnesota is home to 11 federally recognized tribes, seven which are Ashenabe and four are Dakota, and a robust urban Native American community. And whereas languages, foodways, traditions, and ways of knowing of tribal nations across the state and country have demonstrated resilience flourishing despite historical attempts to diminish them, and communities and educators are passionately working to revitalize and celebrate these vital indigenous ways of life. And whereas this day is a call to recognize and celebrate the ongoing contributions of indigenous people in our city, state, and nation, honoring the ways that they have built and sustained a more, more just and inclusive community for all since time immemorial. And whereas indigenous nations in Minnesota continue to face the effects of colonization and continue discrimination against their right to of life, language, and traditions, and history through the legacy of Indian Removal Act, Indian boarding school policies, and other policies that infringe on the indigenous rights, on indigenous rights. And whereas while recognizing the profound and ongoing challenges faced by indigenous communities, we simultaneously honor the powerful community-led efforts underway for healing, recovery, and self-determination that will sustain the cultural of future generations. And whereas the community of St. Louis Park is called to deepen our understanding, engage in meaningful ways, and implement policies and practices that recognize indigenous experiences and honor indigenous sovereignty. Now therefore, let it be known that the mayor and the city council of the City of St. Louis Park hereby honor October 6, 2025 as Indigenous Peoples' Day in our community. If no one has any comments, yep, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I think it's really important to continue to name, all of these are important, but I think especially when it comes to indigenous peoples, this is an issue that is very dear to my heart, and I don't even really know why, but it just is and has been since I was in high school, because of what the people that come from my tradition have done. And a lot of people don't understand the degree to which we have violated human rights and treaties and continued to just, to attempt to destroy the culture of indigenous peoples in this land over the centuries. And it's why there are some reservations that are granted looser laws on certain things. And it's barely scratching the surface of what we need to do, but we need to honor the rights of these people that we tried to, when I say we, I mean, you know, Western Europeans like myself tried to eradicate. And I also, as a member of the Christian clergy, need to name that a big piece of this, the origin of all of this really goes back to an edict that the Pope put out in 1495-ish, roughly after Christopher Columbus came back to Europe, called the Doctrine of Discovery, which meant that you were able to conquer land if it wasn't already conquered by Christians. And that's what led to it all. And so I think that's very important for people to know, and there's some resources in our packet about some other indigenous rights things, but I don't think the Doctrine of Discovery is in there, but I encourage people to Google that. There's some short movies and such on it, that it's a really important part of our history that many people don't know, and so I just wanted to name that. Because this is still a very live and active issue in our culture today, particularly as we look at things like oil lines, pipelines going through indigenous territories. So I'm proud to be part of a city that honors our indigenous peoples. It's the least we could do.
Thank you, council member. Ditto. Unless there's any other council members?
No.
I think Councilmember Paul did say it perfectly. All right, moving on to the recognitions of donations, I wanna recognize all the people who have donated to the City of St. Louis Park and other, and departments within the City of St. Louis Park. I wanna thank the community charities, charities of Minnesota for donating 2,500 donations going up, going towards, I should say, our K-9 officers and police expenses. I also wanna thank Tammy Roykers? Yeah, I hope I did not butcher that last name, for donating towards the park enhancements in honor of her grandson, Paul's fourth birthday, which is really cute. Coalition Nine, I wanna thank them for donating $250 for park enhancements and needs that are at the Westwood Nature Center. I also wanna thank Arlette Barnheiser for donating $1,831 for park enhancements at the Westwood Nature Center. Dorothy and James Hoyt for donating $100. Gerald and Kristy Blick for donating $35. Heidi Ebert for donating $25. Jill and Todd Thies for donating $25. Judith and Bennett for donating another $25. Merlin and Jean for donating $100. Paul and John Carroll for donating $30. And Sarah and Robert Gabler for donating $100, all towards the park enhancements. So you can tell that people really value our parks here and really wanna make sure that they are fully funded. I also cannot forget Brian and Kelly Pinter and Ken and Kathy Naher for donating $20 towards the, oh, sorry, $200, I apologize, $200 towards the police department and for police investigations and honoring Mike Ellerson, Elson, Edelson. Apologize for butchering all the last names. Yes.
Just like to note that a bundle of those donations were given to the Westwood Hills Nature Center honoring Zeta Zag. So I presume it was somebody that really mattered in their life?
Oh, yes.
And thank you very much for making that gift.
Thank you so much for pointing that out. I definitely do not wanna miss that, so thank you. All right, moving on to the minutes, we have four minutes. Do we have any motions and/or comments? Yes.
I have a change for the minutes of August 18th, so if we're gonna approve them all as one, is that the recommendation?
I would, I would say, let's take out August 18th and see if there's any, if anybody would be willing to vote all the other three together, yeah? Like August 11th, September 2nd, and September 8th.
I move approval of the study session meeting minutes of August 11th, the city council meeting minutes of September 2nd, and the study session meeting minutes of September 8th, 2025, as a group, please.
I'll second that.
All right, there's been a second and a motion. Is there any comments on this? Any, I hope there's no correction on this. Okay, without, with that, let's take a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? All right, the moment, the motion has been passed as it is, yeah. With that, I will have, there's one more special study session meeting of August 18th, 2025. Councilmember, you have the floor to make your corrections.
Thank you. Again, this is August 18th, and this is on page six of the minutes, which is in page 36 of the packet. It's the very top of page six, and actually, the first word starts on page five, for what it's worth. Reads, "She appreciated the racial equity discussion but did not understand that this was the only reason..." It should read as follows. "She appreciated the racial equity discussion but did understand that this was not the only reason for the discussion about raising council member salaries." So it's the word "not" is misplaced in that sentence. So, "but did understand that this was not." Make sense? And with that, I move approval.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, seeing none, the minutes have passed with amendments. Hoping that can be corrected here pretty soon. All right, moving on to the consent items, we have a couple of consent items. I did, huh? Oh, okay. Okay. All right, perfect. The mic picked you up and I was like, huh? All right, so we do have a consent item that I heard somebody wants to speak on, but I do not think we need to pull anything off unless there's a council member who is making a motion to do so. So with that, I will entertain any comments or motions.
Move approval.
I'll second that.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. I will now invite whoever, even in the public, members of the public, to see if anybody wants to comment on it. Right now I have a blue card asking 5E, Dennis Meadows, my bad. I'm really bad with last names, I apologize.
Very much, Mayor, council members. Dennis Meadows, I'm with Cushman Wakefield, I'm a general manager. If you go to 5E in your packet, there's a map there that you can follow along, for those in the audience, it's the upper left corner, that little square that kinda reached out to grab what probably was Plymouth back in the 1950s, who knows? But that's where, used to be called Schillard Parkway, then it was called Interchange, now it's called Metro Point Office Park, and I'm manager of the tower. Received a nice letter from the city, thanks very much notifying us of a, of a small consent items. Please don't remove it from your consent agenda. I think that's fine, what they're asking for. It just brought up a point, and I'll work directly with Mr. Jack Sullivan on my particular issue, but I just wanna kinda highlight a couple things for the council for future consideration. I love the Mira, that's our new apartment building, that's next door along that highway there, and, but one of the things that the tenants have realized is they can just park along the frontage road, which wasn't really designed that way. So it's become a parking lot along this side of the frontage road and Ford Parkway and Highway 169 frontage road, whatever, for two of us. What the consent agenda has is just a small 50-foot, hey, we got a sewer there, we'd like to be able to have a no parking, and that's where I'll work with Mr. Sullivan. So we, if we were doing the development again, we probably should say, hey, Mary, you gotta have more parking or something with that, because the tenants, now it's impossible. There's no way we're gonna go say, if they've enjoyed it for a year, their visitors parking, they get free parking, or they have to pay inside the garage, but why pay when there's parking on the street? But it led to, it led to a discussion with Mr. Sullivan of my entrance to Metro Point is just a little bit further than this portion, and as the traffic has gotten smaller, and especially when the snow gets piled up and the traffic moves a little even further into the street on this two-lane road, that's now be turned into like a one and a half-lane road. We're having a hard time making left and right turns out of this, especially with the bridge, Betty Crocker, closed at the moment. We have a lot more traffic here than what we normally see. So I'll work with Mr. Sullivan to say, hey, and it might be up here again on the consent agenda items, 50 feet right across the street from my exit, can I please have no parking for that spot, just to be able to give a little more room for my tenants coming in and out? That's all I have for you today. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you so much, Dennis. All right, with that, do we have any other comments? All right, it's been moved and seconded, so we'll go to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, the consent agenda has, is approved. Moving on to the public hearings, we have a couple of public hearings here today. The first one is our 2026 budget. Let's see. Yeah, the special district, yeah. Hello?
Good evening. Good evening, council and Mayor Mohammed. My name is Kayla Fisher. I'm the Public Services Superintendent for our Public Works Department. And as was mentioned, I'm here this evening for the public hearing regarding the 2026 budget and service charges for our special service districts. The recommended action this evening is for the mayor to open the public hearing after my presentation, take testimony, and close the hearing. There's no other formal action that... There's no other formal action that's required at this meeting. Formal action on the budget and service charges will be placed on the October twentieth consent agenda. For this evening, we're just asking whether or not council has questions regarding the special service district budgets and property owner service charges. And of course, giving the opportunity for a public hearing. So just a little bit of background for those who may not be familiar with the special service districts, we have six of them throughout the city, and these districts allow us to provide enhanced assets, infrastructure, and a higher level of service than we do through, throughout the rest of the city. Our service districts have been in operation for, for decades. There are areas of the city where we have service districts that have been in place for many years and some that are a little bit newer. As I mentioned, the city covers the cost of installing that infrastructure, and then the owners pay the service charges annually to cover maintenance and upkeep, as well as the additional services that we provide. The special service district terms are ten years in length, and then they are extended every ten years, as is noted in the council report. District four was up for recertification this year, and we received the necessary petitions to extend the service charge service charges another ten years through 2035, as long as, as long as the budget and service charges are approved at the October twentieth meeting. City staff in our Public Works Department administer the contracts and the administrative side of the service districts. For those who aren't familiar with where these are located throughout the city, as I mentioned, we have six of them. This is District One, just east of Highway one hundred, along Excelsior Boulevard, Park Center Boulevard, and up to Thirty-Sixth Street, just east of Highway one hundred. District Two runs from Monterey Avenue all the way over to France Avenue along Excelsior Boulevard. This is District Three, where the district runs from Quinton Avenue to Monterey Boulevard. District Four, the one that I mentioned, has just recertified, runs from Louisiana Avenue all the way over to Highway one hundred. That larger parcel that you can see there, just as a, a point of reference, is Methodist Hospital. District Five is up in our west end area and runs along Park Center Boulevard, north and south, I'm sorry, not Park Center Boulevard. Park Place Boulevard. And then District Six is along Thirty-Sixth Street, just west of Highway one hundred. And so our special service districts, for the most part, the infrastructure that we have in place, landscaping, decorative lighting, planter beds and boxes, banners and poles, you'll see those throughout the districts. And then we have major services that we provide throughout the districts. Maintaining those banners, maintaining landscape and irrigation. There are a couple of districts that elected to do sidewalk snow removals, you'll see only Districts One and Three pay for those services. And then Districts One through Five have decorative tree lighting that we install in the winter months, just to bring a little more light during our dark winter months. As is outlined in our report, all of the districts have a proposed increase of two point four or five percent in the service fees. And that is throughout the districts, that's based on the Consumer Price Index for the Twin Cities area. The property owners, property owners were notified of the hearing this evening and the changes to the, proposed changes to their service fees for the 2026 year. The budget and service charge notices were sent out on September twenty-third. They were also published in our city's Sun Sailor. At this point, we haven't received any comments from business owners. A couple of calls just clarifying the services that we're providing and some questions from newer property owners. So again, at this point, we're looking for holding the public hearing, and then, of course, answering any questions from council at this time.
Thank you so much. All right, with that, I will welcome any council questions and or comments. Any clarifying comments before I open it up to the public that, let me clarify that? Yes?
Yeah, I just have a quick question, I'm, I'm impressed with the two point four or five percent being where it's at, but you mentioned that's the Consumer Price Index, that's based on the Consumer Price Index for Twin Cities. And is that a contractual limit, do you know?
That is outlined in the resolutions for the ordinance, so we are limited on the, we use that as a way to equitably determine increases if we feel they are needed. And then we do have a limit that is outlined in, in the resolutions as far as how high we can increase those rates each year, even in a year where there might be a, a large increase in the Consumer Price Index.
Okay, okay, and then when the ten-year term is up, is that when it might be adjusted for? You know, in some of our budgeting process this year, we've realized that we're faced with insurance costs escalating and such. Would at that ten-year window be where it might be adjusted beyond the CPI? Do you know?
That is, I'm not certain the answer, the answer to that question, if we can do that in changing the resolution, or if that would be something that we would need to go back into the original ordinance, where the, you know, where the district was created to make that change. I think historically, we've, we've kept the original resolution, resolutions each year the same.
Okay, even at that ten-year renewal, the renewal time, right?
Yes, but again, I, I don't know the answer off the top of my head, I don't know, Soren, if you have anything to add there that I may be missing.
I don't, I'm not sure about that, I'd have to take a look at the format, the documents that formed the district itself.
Okay, well, that's good, I didn't submit that question earlier because I didn't recognize it, but yes, thanks for your answer.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Go ahead, council member.
Thanks, Kayla. Can you tell me how, I guess, this isn't about the existing districts, these are just a couple of curious questions about the opportunity to add some more, I know we've had six for quite some time, right? Can you remind me how business areas reach out and asks for consideration to be a special service district, or what the process is to establish that relationship with the city?
Sure. Not having been through the process personally, I don't have a ton of detail to add to it, but my understanding is that a district is formed when a number of business owners or property owners approach the city regarding a higher level of service that we can provide through the special service districts. It's typically, they petition the city first to form a district, is my understanding.
Yeah, that makes sense, and then, this isn't a fair question either, because I didn't give you a heads up, and also, yeah, maybe haven't done, you're maybe not aware, but I know the Walker Lake area is not a special service district, and I wonder, can you update me on whether any conversations have occurred with, with them? Here comes Jason, maybe to answer, no.
Yeah, Jason, come on up, no.
People changing jobs around here. Do you know the status of whether there's been further conversation with that part of the city?
My understanding is that the Walker Lake area did discuss with city staff the potential of having a district there, and the outcome of that conversation was that they decided not to petition the city to form a district.
Okay, yeah, that was a while ago, but maybe that's still the status. And then lastly, again, a question you may not know, but is there a minimum size that a district needs to be in order to be, to qualify as a special service district? I'm thinking about small little strips along Minnetonka Boulevard and other areas that, that may be good candidates, but may not qualify because of size minimums.
Yeah, I, that, that's a great question, I have not seen anything that references size, so I don't believe that is, I don't believe there's a limitation, but I'm not certain.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions? Any clarifying questions? All right, I will remind the public that this is a public hearing, and because I know that people want to share their thoughts and, and on any of the things that are on the agenda, but specifically around this. But I will say, this is, if you are coming up and you want to talk to the council, just a reminder that this isn't a question and answer forum, it's more so like, so we can hear your thoughts and opinions and, and concerns, and then staff will be here to answer any of your questions when, when we're all wrapped up or outside, just outside of this. I didn't receive any blue cards, but if you do want to talk, please come on up and say your, your first and last name. And if anybody wants to talk, I'll go over the instructions, otherwise, I will save ourselves tons and tons of time. But, so with that, with that, I open up the public hearing for anybody who wants to talk about this particular topic. This is the awkward part. Going once, going twice, sold to nobody. All right, with that, thank you so much. Council, do you have any comments, questions, concerns, motions? Oh, yeah, we're not voting on this one, reminder, it literally says right here. All right, do you have everything you need from us, unless there's comments? Does council want to make comments? All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, next up is, that was six A, six B, Melissa, you're coming up. No rush, Kayla. All right, we do have a second public hearing, same rules apply, if you want to talk about, if you want to talk to us about this, please grab the blue cards in the back, fill them out, you are not obligated to do so, but feel free to do so, just to help us keep this running smoothly. And then, just a reminder, we will be voting on this particular topic. So with that, Melissa, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, my name is Melissa Kennedy, I'm the city clerk. Tonight, you're being asked to consider the first reading of an ordinance setting the salaries for the mayor and council members. A public hearing is required, so the mayor is asked to open the public hearing, take public testimony, and close the hearing. And then you're asked to consider a motion regarding the first reading of the ordinance. Little bit of background on this item. This was the result of a council requested discussion that came in earlier this summer. Statute and the Home Rule Charter provide that the council can set their own salaries and may increase or decrease those salaries by ordinance. Any increases in the salaries have to be adopted before the next regular municipal election, which, this is my plug, that that's on November fourth, 2025. And, but they can't take effect until after the election. So that's why the effective date of the proposed ordinance is January first, 2026. So in 2015, the city council adopted legislation that not only set the salaries for mayor and council, but also implemented automatic adjustments after each regular municipal election. So the current annual salary for the mayor is twenty thousand eight hundred and forty-two dollars. The current annual salary for council members is fourteen thousand four hundred and thirteen dollars. I would note that this is a cumulative amount that is meant to reflect compensation for your roles, both as members of the city council and as members of the Economic Development Authority. So the council discussed this several times over the summer, on July seventh and on August eighteenth. Following those discussions, the council directed staff to prepare a one-time amendment to the existing ordinance to set the salaries for mayor and councils, it would be an increase. The proposed annual salary for the mayor is twenty-three thousand five hundred dollars, and the proposed annual salary for council members is eighteen thousand dollars. As I mentioned earlier, the ordinance amendment does require a public hearing and two readings by the city council. Salaries were previously set by both ordinance and resolution for each role, so separating out city council and EDA pay. That was done because they used to be paid out of two different funds. So because that's not occurring anymore, salaries are paid out of the general fund only now. We will be setting your pay by ordinance exclusively. I would also note, just in case people want to know the percentages, the proposed ordinance would increase the mayor's salary by thirteen percent and would increase the council member's salary by twenty-five percent. So it's just, again, one-time adjustments resetting that base amount, and then the ordinance continues to provide for automatic adjustments going forward after each regular municipal election. So the next adjustment would occur after the 2027 election. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that the council may have. Otherwise, I would ask you to open up the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Does council have any clarifying questions? All right, seeing none, I will now officially open up the public hearing. The same rules apply, if you want to come up, feel free, this is your house. Just say your first and last name and where you live, and of course, what your concern is, or what your thoughts are, and we'll be happy to hear it. All right, going once, going twice, sold to no one, okay. All right, moving on to the comments and questions, go ahead, council member.
I can start, since this was my idea.
Yeah.
And I'm leaving in December. So this is not about personal benefit. As I thought, seriously though, as I thought about the eight years that I've spent on city council, and the time and energy that I had invested in this role, and that my colleagues invest in this role, I thought one thing I could do before I left was at least raise the discussion with council about the possibility of fairer compensation for the work that we do. Just before this meeting tonight, most of us, half of us, were over at Lenox Community Center for an hour, hour and a half, mingling with the community, the mayor made a speech. We were doing our civic work last weekend, several of us were at Wat Prom Temple doing our civic work, making speeches, receiving awards, and so on. I just saw a video that the mayor made for Westopolis, so cute.
Thank you.
Was not probably included in your duties when you, you know, assumed, assumed the responsibilities, you didn't know you'd be becoming a media star as well. I think in a week or so, some of us are going to meet out at the bike path and talk about some safe passageway through the community. On top of that, we as council members receive these, I know I had a correction for page three hundred and sixty-four, so that was not the end of the packet, so we read several hundred pages of material to prepare for these meetings. And then we often respond to questions and concerns from constituents prior to and after the meetings. And then we attend the meetings themselves. And there are many other things, I won't go through the litany. The increase in salaries that's being proposed through this ordinance change totals twenty-five thousand dollars of our fifty-four million dollar city budget. So I believe the impact itself will be quite minimal on residents. And the increase to each of the future, current and future folks' salaries will be between, in the two to three thousand dollar range. So nothing significant, but meaningful, I think, especially for colleagues who are working extra jobs to pay the bills, who maybe have to hire some extra security, who maybe need to hire childcare and so on. So for all those reasons and more, I, I'm so happy that we are courageous in, you know, expecting and hoping that the city will agree, the community generally speaking, will agree that this is a vital role that we are playing as council members, and that to compensate current and future council folks who haven't yet thought of applying, but may be able to, because they have a little more extra compensation, will be understood if I file the trajectory, trajectory of that sentence properly. So those are my comments, and thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, council member. Any others, yep, go ahead, council member.
And thank you, council member Rog, for bringing this to us. I just wanted to know, you know, when I first attempted to become a city council person, I was applying for the vacated seat by Larry Kraft at the at-large A seat, which I did not get. Lost to my esteemed colleague, council member Ferris, who couldn't be here tonight. And I didn't realize when I applied that we even got paid at all. And when I realized that, I went, oh, well, that, that And when I realized that, I went, oh, well, that that's nice. But that's because I'm living in a pretty privileged position where I could hop on and be a city council person without any kind of compensation. And what I've learned since then, as I ran for this seat and was elected and have now done the work, just how much work it can be. It can be very streaky. There are slower months and there are busier months. But but one of the things we've talked about is that very few, if any, people, or maybe nobody, really runs for a seat like this for the money. We do it because we want to give back to our city. But without any kind of compensation, it can be a barrier for a lot of really great candidates. And so I am just very in support of this for just for the fact of doing anything and everything we can to remove as many barriers to public service as possible. And particularly for those who work shift work and, you know, maybe this kind of increase is just enough to enable them to work that one less shift so that they can serve as a city council member or even run for city council. So I just wanted to name all that. There's a lot of, a lot of things in the pot here. But overall, this is about trying to remove as many barriers to public service as possible because public service is what really drives this entire nation.
Go ahead.
Yes, thank you very much. This is the first time we've voted on a significant increase of the council and mayor salaries since I got on the council 12 years ago. And before that, the first vote, the most recent vote they'd taken around salaries was 2008, when we were in a recession and they reduced council salaries. And it was public spirited then, and it's public spirited now. In 2015, we finally adopted an ordinance that tied our, we got nominal increases of the council pay tied to the non-union and union contracts for a while. This is an opportunity for us to raise our pay a little more commensurate with the work. I've done the calculations figuring about 20 hours a week on city council work that we normally do. We get paid about $15 an hour currently. And this is going to raise us up to $18 an hour. And that's not going to drive people necessarily, as you noted, into public service, but it is going to say, well, I can work at Target right now at, you know, a part-time job, or I can consider doing public service instead. We've got at least one council member that works three jobs, you know. So it's, it's time to do this. It's, it's never good optics when we do do it because it seems self-serving. But by the same token, it's the right thing to do, I think. I'll certainly be making a motion to adopt the first reading of this ordinance.
You, any others? Yep, go ahead, council member.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to go on record to say that I will not be supporting this, this change. I support it in concept. I think that there's been a lot of good reasons presented. But I think that while the timing appears good in some ways, I think in other ways, the timing is not good. We are faced with, as some of you that have been following our budget process, our commercial property values are hugely impacted this year in their assessments, and that will be impacting all of our residents when it comes to their property taxes. And because that is so extreme, this budget time, I am going to vote no to this amendment and support it at a later time. So I just want to go on record explaining that.
Thank you, council member. Go ahead, council member.
Yep, thank you, Mayor. And thank you to all my colleagues for the comments that have been shared. And this is, yes, this is where sometimes it's an uncomfortable time to talk about. Well, the first one, uncomfortable time is when you run and you say, you should trust me. The second one is like, you should trust me enough to say yes to a salary increase. I will say that I've appreciated a lot of comments. We are facing, we're not the only city that's facing some of our budgetary concerns. But I will say that it is really important for people to have these seats, to have different life experiences. And so it doesn't serve a community when only one type of person can serve in this seat, meaning those that have the ability to dedicate 20, 30 hours, whatever the case may be for that time period. And as one of my colleagues said, we do have a colleague that does have multiple jobs. And that voice is very much needed. And if that is a barrier for someone to serve, I really wish that we could remove it. And so I will be supporting this ordinance here that we were discussing tonight and look forward to other budgetary concern conversations before. And we've got a big one coming up here, but I will be supporting this in the spirit of which. And thank you for bringing up the topic. I believe Mayor Mohammed and Councilmember Rog, you were the ones that proposed the, the discussion that we're here talking about tonight.
Thank you, council member. I will say I am also in support of this for all the reasons that are listed. But I think above all, it's not the individuals that are here. It's more so for the future folks who will come on and who will be doing this work for the next 10 years, 15 years to be reflective of the pay. I know that we are going to be similar to our colleagues across the metro in what they, in the pay scale. I know that some of the budgetary concerns, as you listed, council member, is also being experienced by the metro area. And I look forward to having that robust conversation when the time comes in regards to how can we help alleviate some of the pressures. I know that we were talking to our congressional folks today and our state representatives in trying to get some funding and really help support. And this is not part of the conversation, but I think it's important to look at it in the grand scheme of things and how we fund our city and more importantly, how do we use that funding? And I feel like this speaks to the values of St. Mo's Park. And yeah, and I appreciate people electing us to be able to make this really difficult decision. So on that being said, we will be voting on this, so I will now entertain any motions.
Move approval. Do you need more than that?
No.
Okay.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
All right, I'm really bad with my math, so correct me if I'm, yep, five, no, not five. Five yes? Five, five yes, one no, and one missing. Okay, noting that. All right, with that, this, this, I should say, ordinance has passed. No.
The first reading of the ordinance.
First reading of the ordinance has passed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. I know you jumped on that. But that being said, thank you so much, Melissa. And thank you, council, for willing to have that really difficult conversation. All right, moving on to 7A, we have Caitlin.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Caitlin Shampoo. I'm an associate planner at the city in the Community Development Department. And tonight, I'll be presenting the Knollwood Chipotle project for your review and consideration. Also want to point out that the property owner, Jay Lindsay, and then project manager from Civil Site Group, Patrick Sarver, are in the audience and available to answer any questions that you may have. So the proposed project involves two properties located in the southwest corner of the city, adjacent to Knollwood Mall, 8528 Highway 7 and 8530 Highway 7. The owner of both properties, Lindsay Knollwood II LLC, proposes to develop a Chipotle restaurant on the southern parcel, which is outlined in red on the slide. The restaurant will have a drive-through lane on the south side of the building that will be used for pickup orders only. The northern parcel, 8530 Highway 7, which is outlined in blue, is zoned C2 general commercial and guided commercial in the comprehensive plan. It has two existing buildings on the site. The building on the west is a Firestone, which provides motor vehicle services. And the building on the east side of the site is a multi-tenant building with a mix of restaurant, retail and service uses. It also has a drive-through on the south side of the building for the Jimmy John's that is within that building. And this is a full drive-through with an order board and a pickup window. The southern parcel, 8528, which is outlined in green on the slide, is a vacant site zoned C2 general commercial and guided for right-of-way in the comprehensive plan. The property located at 8530 Highway 7 has an existing special permit that was originally approved in 1985 and later amended that same year, and then again in 1986. The original special permit and its amendments resulted in the demolition of an existing car wash at the time and construction of an automotive service center, which is still there today. The proposed project does not alter the existing buildings on this site, but it does propose changes to the southern end of the parcel in the parking lot. The property located at 8528 Highway 7 is a vacant site that was formerly used as a westbound on-ramp to Highway 7 from Aquila Avenue South. The Minnesota Department of Transportation had a highway easement over a portion of that property until 2022, when it released its easement to the property owner. So to facilitate the proposed development, the applicant is requesting the following: approval of a comprehensive plan amendment to change the future land use of a portion of the property at 8528 Highway 7 from right-of-way to commercial. A approval of a conditional use permit to allow in-vehicle service, off-site parking and shared parking for 8528 Highway 7. And approval to rescind the special permit and approve a conditional use permit for 8530 Highway 7 to allow in-vehicle sales and service and more than one principal building on the site. The map on this slide shows the proposed future land use for 8528 Highway 7, which is commercial. Staff do not anticipate significant impacts of this change on the surrounding properties, given that they're the existing commercial uses around this site. And then, as you can see on the map, most of the properties adjacent to this site are already guided for commercial as well. The following slides will provide an overview of the zoning analysis for this project, starting with the architectural design standards. So the proposed building will consist mostly of brick and glass, which we consider, the zoning code considers, Class 1 materials. Each building facade must consist of at least 60% Class 1 materials and no more than 10% of Class 3 materials. So the proposed project does meet that requirement. And then it also meets our requirements for ground floor transparency in the C2 district by providing visibility into the space, and that's shown by the windows in the renderings on this slide. The applicant requested a conditional use permit for off-site and shared parking with the existing commercial lot out of for two main reasons. So the first being that the Chipotle parking lot is an extension of the existing parking lot for the commercial property to the north. And the second being that the Chipotle lot cannot accommodate the minimum required parking for the proposed use by itself. Given that we have the off-site parking and shared parking requests, staff assessed the parking requirements for both lots together. The total required parking for the two properties is 84 parking spaces. This includes a 10% reduction for being located within a quarter mile of transit service. Route 17 runs along 37th Street to the north. The proposed project meets the requirement by providing 68 parking spaces on the existing commercial lot and 16 parking spaces on the Chipotle lot. The site plan also includes four bicycle parking spaces on the west side of the building, so that's shown with the blue arrow, and four parking spaces served by electric vehicle charging stations, including one ADA parking space. 50% of the parking spaces impacted by the project will also be served by conduit that will allow for future, future installation of electric vehicle charging stations. So altogether, this meets the zoning code requirements for the proposed project. I also wanted to point out that the proposed Chipotle development will not have access, direct access to Aquila Avenue South or Highway 7. Customers will access the proposed restaurant from 37th Street West via a proposed easement across the existing commercial lot. The Minnesota Department of Transportation also restricted access to Highway 7 when it released its easement over a portion of that property. And the city will also prohibit direct access to both Aquila and Highway 7 as a condition of approval. The zoning code requires that in-vehicle sales and service in the C2 district provide enough space in the drive aisle or drive-through lane for at least six cars, starting at the customer service point. So this is either the order board or the pickup window, whichever type of drive-through lane it is. As shown on the slide, Chipotle provides space for a line of eight cars from the pickup window, which meets this code requirement. Those cars are shown in red on the south side of the site. The applicant also provided the six-car stacking requirement for the Jimmy John's on the parcel to the north. And the development of this drive-through likely predated our stacking requirement, which is why that last car starts to encroach a little bit into the drive aisle. At the planning commission meeting, there were some comments, some discussion about potential site circulation challenges resulting from the drive-throughs on these sites. The property owner had attended that meeting and was able to speak to the commissioner's comment. The proposed project will more clearly identify the Jimmy John's drive-through lane with striping. It will also expand the drive aisle adjacent to the drive-through lane to allow for two-way traffic on the south side of that northern parcel, which is an improvement to the existing conditions. Given the Chipotle pickup lane exceeds the six-car stacking requirement, staff don't believe, do not believe this will exacerbate any site circulation challenges that may already exist. And then between the planning commission and city council meetings, the applicant also added some pedestrian striping on the east side of the site that's shown by those blue boxes, sorry, they're kind of small, to better identify connections to the adjacent sidewalks and then also better identify where pedestrians may be navigating the site, both for pedestrians' benefit, but also for people who may be in vehicles. The applicant proposes to plant 15 new trees and 92 new shrubs on the site, which meets the zoning requirements for the project. As shown on the site plan, the Chipotle project cannot, or the Chipotle lot cannot accommodate all of the required trees on its site. So the remaining, remaining trees will be planted on the portion of the neighboring property that is impacted by the project. And I also want to note that the applicant is not proposing to remove any trees as a part of this development or to facilitate this development. And once again, these are the staff recommended motions. And then as just a quick recap, the planning commission did review and hold a public hearing for the application on Wednesday, August 20th. There were no members of the public in attendance. Staff did receive a comment from one resident prior to the planning commission meeting, voicing their opposition to the conditional use permit for the drive-through. And then we also received a comment from a resident between this meeting and the previous city council meeting in September, voicing their support for the project. So both of those comments are in the packet for your review and consideration. After closing the public hearing, the planning commission recommended approval with a 6-1 vote. So if city council approves the application tonight, staff will submit the comprehensive plan amendment to the Metropolitan Council for review and authorization. And then I just also want to note that the applicant shared a memo with additional details on the project and responses to some of the concerns shared by council members at this September city council meeting. And as I mentioned before, the applicant is also available to answer any follow-up questions and speak to this memo and the project. So with that, I will turn it back over to you, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Caitlin. All right, does council have any questions for Caitlin? Yes.
Thank you, Caitlin. Very nice report. Could I get you to go back to the slide that shows the existing environment from the overhead? Right? Can, so can you show me? I've hear from residents about congestion. I've hear from residents about congestion, some congestion along Thirty-seventh, it is, right there? Can you show me where? And I heard you say no Aquila direct access, no highway seven direct access. Where will a driver come in and out?
Great question. Thank you, Councilmember Bud. So they will still use this same access point that is here for the existing commercial site, kind of in the northwest corner.
So if I were going to Jimmy John's today, that's how I would be coming in and out?
Yes.
So could you, with that pointer, show me coming in, going through the Chipotle lane, and then out?
I will do my best. Wish I had a laser pointer. So vehicles, to the best of my ability, vehicles will come in off of Thirty-seventh Street here and most likely come down the western side of the parking lot and then enter the Chipotle drive-through around here, or pickup lane around here.
And then to exit?
And then exit. They'll have a couple options. So they'll either be able to exit on the east side of the multi-tenant building and come around.
Got it.
Or now that the drive aisle has been extended next to the Jimmy John's, they'll also have the option to go on the south side of the multi-tenant building and then go back around. Although I think most drivers will probably take the eastern route.
Go around the building, yeah. Yeah. Okay. And I asked this question in the questions, but in terms of the traffic volumes, are we concerned about what will be introduced here, or can you comment on that?
I can, Councilmember Bud. So there wasn't specific traffic study for this project. It didn't reach our kind of threshold, thank you, thresholds for requiring a traffic study. But we do have some previous data from the Blake Road Corridor Study. It was conducted by the City of Hopkins in partnership with the City of St. Louis Park and other affected jurisdictions that looked at the intersection of highway seven and Aquila, the intersection of Aquila and Thirty-seventh, and the intersection of Aquila and Thirty-Sixth, which is just to the north of this site. And for both Aquila and Thirty-Sixth and Aquila and Thirty-seventh, the level of service, the overall average was A or B for both of those intersections, which is the highest it could be, Level A, both the existing at the time, which I think was twenty-fourteen, and then also projected into the future in twenty-thirty-five. There were very slight changes. I think I have a slide for it that I can pull up quickly to show you. This is from the report showing the level of service in the AM and PM at the Thirty-Sixth and Thirty-seventh Street intersections with Aquila, and that was the existing at the time. And then the, if it lets me. The future, I tried to point out that there was no change for the Thirty-Sixth Street intersection, and then there was a very minor change for the Thirty-seventh Street when they were projecting out to twenty-thirty-five.
Okay. That's helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Any other questions? Yep, go ahead, Councilmember.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, there's, you know, environment sustainability is a big concern here in St. Louis Park and of, I think, well, I'll say myself, I won't speak for the council as a whole, but it is part of our values and such. So there's a lot of concerns about idling vehicles, especially with any form of a drive-through. But the question I have, and I wish I had asked this earlier so you maybe could have more time, I apologize if you just can't answer this right now, but what kind of data do we have around the impact of a drive-through on the environment? And in particular, in an era where we're seeing more and more cars with the automatic engine stop-start situation? I care deeply about the earth, but I also want us to make our decisions around such things based on like actual data on it, and I just don't know. So do you have, do you know anything about that?
That's a great question, Councilmember Bodwin. I personally do not have a lot of or any information on, you know, how much carbon is being emitted while a car is sitting idle. That may be information that our sustainability coordinator or sustainability team is more aware of. Something that I do know and have data on is that the applicant had actually shared with us a study that was conducted, it was conducted by Chipotle, about their pickup lanes and just showing the difference in time that cars are sitting idle in the pickup lane on average compared to your typical drive-through that has the order board. And I think it was cut in half. The applicant could probably speak better to that than I can, but so there is a decrease in that, but to the extent of what those greenhouse gas and carbon emissions look like, I can't speak to that unfortunately.
Okay. Go ahead, Councilmember.
Yeah, thank you. And that exactly was one of my other questions, too, because in the report from Civil Site Group, it was the proposed Chipotle's non-traditional drive-through, limited to online and mobile pickup orders only. So I think of like drive-throughs, well, like you have the order board, but as I understand it, it's a little bit different now, right? So there's more mobile online or mobile orders, and the time has been drastically cut. So I'm curious about, very similar to Councilmember Bodwin, is this, because of how people are doing business today, are the assumptions around idling still the same versus if you were idling, waiting for your kid to get picked up from school? So just as we're thinking about some of the policies around idling, you know, the restaurants, it's turnaround, like when you do an order, how fast can they get the order and go and leave versus if you're sitting there and waiting for someone? So I just, I want us to be thinking about that as we're talking through. And again, this is the sustainability question, but I think it speaks to whatever future council decides around drive-throughs is, I think, something that they should consider.
Go ahead, Councilmember.
Thank you. Thanks, Caitlin. Good report. So, yeah, that's the thing I wanted to look at. So thanks, Sue, for asking the question about where do folks enter and exit. I hadn't grasped that either. And I have questions, I guess curiosity, about signage and how people are going to know that they are to go to that restaurant over there by going over there. The entrance seem, like, how are they going to know to go, if I'm tracking this properly, right? How are they, how are folks going to know where to go in?
That's a great question, Councilmember Rog. I'm not aware, I can't remember off the top of my head what the internal, like, site circulation signage will look like. The applicant might be able to speak to that a little bit better. I think, given the access point to the site being on the same side where both drive-through lanes have their access points, creates like more clear visibility. But again, I'd probably defer to the applicant to speak to that a little bit more.
Could you say a word about signage or directional signage?
I would say if you're coming up, oh, please, come on up. Please say your first and last name, your role, and, yeah, and answer the question.
Thank you for hearing the proposal. Jay Lindsay. And you want a title? I guess, owner of the project. But, yeah, wayfinding is always an interesting discussion. We don't, we do these projects, you know, in various places, and we don't perceive that this would be an issue because the new building would have its own monument sign. It's very highly, it would be seen really clearly. Obviously, it's a prominent location, and the wayfinding sign would be at the entrance at the property line where you'd be facing it as you'd come into the site. There would be a small wayfinding sign, but the monument sign is, there's an independent monument sign for the site that would be highly visible as you'd be driving around the building. So I don't think it'll be, you can get in issues where there's seven or eight, ten buildings, where something can kind of get lost in there, but with really two buildings, we don't think that'll be a concern.
Okay. The monument sign is different from a wayfinding sign, though, right?
Yes, that's right.
The monument sign just says there's a Chipotle somewhere around here, and the wayfinding is this is where you go in to make your order.
Yeah. No, it's a good question. So the wayfinding sign would be on the property line as you'd face it, as you enter the site, you would see it in front of you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks for answering the question.
Before you go sit back down, does any of the Councilmembers, I don't want to, any of the Councilmembers have any questions? No? Okay.
I'll just, I could speak for a moment about the pickup window. Chipotle obviously is operating across the country, and I'm not a spokesperson for them, but they're also hearing concerns about all sorts of issues, environmental concerns, and they want to be good neighbor. They've had a lot of people within different communities that appreciate the new process they came up with, which is because there's no pay at the drive-through process, that it's done on your phone, it's an app that texts you when your food's ready, that they've cut their times down significantly. Where the window, like, if you're on Shady Oak and Crosstown, and I've gone over there and just sat there, there's almost nobody ever there, cars come, grab their food and go. So whether it's elderly, disabled, or mothers with children, it's become a very efficient way because the pay, the alert, and there's no voice, and there's no waiting for your order while you're there ordering. So people can be on, they could be at home waiting or running errands or picking up kids and just come and grab and go. So it's greatly reduced those concerns for most of the places that we are operating these, but they're good questions.
Yeah. Go ahead, Councilmember.
Just to clarify, so Shady Oak and Crosstown has this model in place?
Yeah, there's quite a few of them, I mean, across the country. This is kind of the new model. That's why it's being endorsed by so many groups.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I have a couple other questions for Caitlin, though.
Okay. Yep, go ahead.
Thank you. So I heard eighty-four as a parking space number. Are you saying that this new development would require this project, sorry, eighty-four parking spaces?
Councilmember Rog, both sites combined.
Okay.
So the commercial site to the north, all of the uses on that property, plus the Chipotle, proposed Chipotle, have a total requirement of eighty-four.
Thanks for the clarification. And so is there any bike parking currently in this area?
I do not know off the top of my head.
Okay. The reason for my question is, I see that there are four bike parking slots, what are they called, spaces, that are required as part of this project, and to me, that number seems low relative to what I understand to be the parking requirements, but perhaps I don't understand.
That's a great question, and let me refer to my staff report. I guess I didn't provide the math in here.
I'm sorry, I didn't ask this question earlier, so if you need to get back.
No, that's okay. The requirement for the Chipotle site is four bicycle parking spaces, and so that is what the applicant has provided. I can look into what the verbiage in the zoning code is, how we determine that as the requirement, but unfortunately, I don't know off the top of my head.
Yeah, I'd be curious. There's not enough bike parking in this city, so if we can get, the more we can get and the more we can just put a magnifying glass to it, the better. Thank you. And then you talked about, last question, you talked about the traffic flows being Class A or something about eight letters, and that A was the highest? Is that right?
That is correct.
Okay. And so we're looking at that as a good thing?
That is correct. Yep.
Because we're measuring against already existing high traffic or?
Councilmember Rog, I'm...
You may not have tracked the conversation properly, or the, what we were talking about in terms of data.
The level of service is, to my understanding, I'm not a transportation planner or traffic engineer.
You're doing great.
But I'll try to play one for a moment, is a standard that is established, and they outline it by letters, A, B, C, D, E, F.
I see. So A was about the standard, it wasn't about the amount, the number of cars per se, or they're aligned?
I believe so, but again, I don't know off the top of my head.
I'm not being fair to you because I'm putting you on the spot.
That's okay.
It's in Sue's word. I'm going to get her to hear.
Sounds like Sean can help save me.
Sorry, y'all.
Sean, if you want to say your first and last name and your role, you already know.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, I'm Sean Walter. I'm the tiny manager. Want to share? So the level of service is grade, basically, provided, A through F. So some concern and potentially to improve the situation. Level of service A, it basically comes down to how long folks have to wait at an intersection. Frankly, when you're thinking about transportation, it kind of to the question of the climate action kind of goals of the city. Level of service A means you've probably overbuilt the space, and level of service C is actually a completely acceptable, or even D sometimes, is a completely acceptable level of service, especially during PM peak hours. And you really need to look at more than just the individual time, but also the duration of that delay. So you might have a level of service E or F during the PM peak, but, and that, you know, is a frustration because it's congestion, but if it's only for an hour of the day and you don't really want to build an intersection for twenty-four hours. I think it's these balances that need to be made, but it really does come down to how long are people waiting? The level of service shifts for a traffic signal light versus a stop sign and how long you're waiting. People are less patient when they're stopped at a stop sign than they are at a signal. So there's a number of factors that go into this. It's all basically the Institute of Traffic Engineers that have generated this system, and it gives us a subject, excuse me, objective way to review these types of questions when they come up.
Thank you so much. I can't believe I went eight years on council without integrating that into my knowledge, so.
And now you know.
I never got that till now. Yeah. Thanks a lot for taking time to explain. That's it.
All right. Thank you. Any other council members? Any questions? All right. Thank you, Sean. I will now, I know that this isn't a public hearing, but I will open a public comment on anybody who wants to talk about this particular topic. You have a floor, just come on up, say your first and last name, and speak truth to what Twice. Looks like it's not selling to anybody tonight, but it's always a good habit to get into, to make space for people if and when they want to speak. With that said, unless you have one last couple of things that you would like to say to the council, I'm, we're fine moving on to vote, I think. Yeah, we are voting on this. Yep, we are voting on this. Yes.
I would like to just say a few things. We've really enjoyed the process. I think the city has been fantastic, so esteemed council members and mayor. We, as a group, are a small company, three or four people. We do projects like this in various places. We keep the things that we build, so we own and manage, and my cellphone is the person that every tenant calls in our whole company. I'm close with all of our tenants, everybody there, and we've owned this property for a long time, so we know it well. We feel like this is a great project. We're excited about it. We think that it is not, it's not a real busy site. There's always thirty or forty parking spots available currently. We're planning on refacing the existing buildings to kind of match the refresh that this provides us, so we think we're going to beautify that area. We're also going to treat the water that's going to the creek, and I have a bit of a background in trying to work in that, in those kind of endeavors, and then we're also having the opportunity to rerun the current site if this goes forward to treat all the water. So we're excited about that. Adding bike as needed, for sure. That's an easy fix. Right now, we have a large, in front of Pearl Vision, there's a large concrete sidewalk that's very deep. It's, I don't know if it's fifteen feet wide or something, but that, that's a prominent location that people park their bikes currently. But I think that if we need to do more, we're happy to always do more. If, I think adding the crosswalks, getting feedback from the city staff, the planning review process has been really accretive to the process. I feel like it's a better project now than it was when we started, and we feel like that's the way it should go. So the staff has been fantastic and very talented, and so we're excited about it. So we're, thanks for listening and taking a few minutes, and we appreciate you. So thanks.
Thank you. You just said my favorite couple of words, which is, if we need to do more, we will. And I will say, I think that's the type of collaboration and partnership we're always looking for here in St. Louis Park, so with that, if you have nothing else... looking for here in St. Louis Park, so with that, if you have nothing else to say, I will move on to council final comments and vote on this. Yes, oh, go ahead.
Make a motion?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, I would like to move that we approve the comprehensive plan amendment to change the future land use of a portion of 8528 Highway 7 from right-of-way to commercial. Do we want two motions, and all in one?
Yeah.
Okay, a conditional use permit and to rescind, yes, okay, resolution for a comprehensive plan amendment, a conditional use permit, and to rescind a special permit and approve a conditional use permit for Knollwood Chipotle.
Second.
Moved in seconded, any comments? I will say, the real foodie here tonight is not, or I should say, the real foodie is not here tonight, but we're always, we're always excited to have new restaurants, new folks come to St. Louis Park. I think Knollwood is slowly becoming even a bigger hub, which is really exciting, and so I will be in favor of this project, and I want to say welcome. I love Chipotle, and, but that's not the reason why I'm doing this, I just want to be very clear. But I wanted to channel Yolanda's spirit, which is the other council member that is missing, and so she, yeah.
Usually is very, very lovely about this.
I love how you guys are fighting about this, we'll start with council member.
I do, so I wanted to defer to Councilmember Bud though, just being in your ward in case you wanted, had anything to say.
Well, I think I've shared my support for this, and I just think, agree with the mayor that Knollwood is a great place, and appreciate the work that you've done in owning what you do there, and I would look forward to this kind of revitalization of that space.
Yeah, thank you, I just, there's a couple things. I appreciate the way we as a city are looking very carefully at these things, I really appreciate y'all's work in community development, your report is very thorough, very helpful, and this issue though around drive-throughs continues to come up with just about any business that wants a drive-through in our town. And so I would like to just go on record to say, I think it would really behoove us to take a closer look at that, and consider if we want some kind of ordinance around drive-throughs and sustainability, I just think it's a very, it just keeps coming up, and we don't really have any direction on it currently, so then it gets tricky, and we're kind of pinned into trying to make decisions without any kind of real ordinance or guidance around it. So I would like us to look at that. With that, I'd also like to encourage any business who's going to have any form of a drive-through to maybe consider putting signs up that simply say, you know, please shut off your car when waiting for your order. Just to remind people, which I think is a simple thing, so that's just one thing I wanted to throw out. I also would like to see a little bit more bike parking, but it sounds like that's easy to add if need be. And so with all of that in mind, I think, yeah, this looks like a good project, but I just want to keep that drive-through and environment issue before us, and get some more direction for us as a council and a city on it going forward. But with that, I will be supporting this, this project.
I do what the mayor says. I will also be supporting this project. And very similar to, I think, a lot of my colleagues, we do have, you know, there's a little bit of push and pull with the concept of drive-through, but I do think that perhaps a comprehensive policy around idling, because there are a lot of places in our city that have idling, and so forth. So I really appreciated the applicant's response to some of the questions around that, and, you know, the old-school way of thinking of drive-through, now it's mobile, and it's really, how quickly can you get folks in and out, and would that be different as building more parking, and they park and they drive, right? So it's not necessarily a drive-through lane, it's really how well you use that site. I will also say that, you know, really thankful that the owners are making reinvestment in our city. When I drive around that area, my kid goes to FAS, and so I'm very frequently seeing that intersection. Currently, the back of that property is, I would say, back of the house operations for some of the businesses. You have signage there because you want people to know that that's where you're located, but really, you know, there's nice screening for the dumpsters and all that, and I appreciate that, but when you're talking about awayfinding, when you're talking about upgrading your class of materials, it does really speak well to how you intend to care for the property. And we have been having, we just talked about the commercial property and how that impacts us as residents who pay taxes, and we do want to see our commercial corridors alive and doing well. We won't speak that much about Knollwood, I think people know that there have, you know, with some of the potential vacancies, but really, I'm happy that you do see an investment here, and it's worthwhile, and that Chipotle is currently in discussions with you.
Thank you. So I too appreciate the flexibility and collaboration that I think has been demonstrated by this, through, via this project, and also by staff, staff's good work, and planning commission's good work to make this project the best it could be. I too share concerns, and I would say even more like objection, to adding drive-throughs and, what is this called, pickup lanes, which I think is a version of a drive-through, right? We must concede that, I think, especially when I think about the investments that our community has made in anti-idling campaigns and efforts, and I think for that work, we were presented with a variety of statistics and facts on the harms of idling, and that they're significant. And so I hope that, and I heard you talk about this being a new model, you know, and I understand your perspective and your lens on that, and I hope though that it's not a new model for our city, because I'd like to see us with these discussions that we're starting to have with increasing momentum on council for like, hey, we keep bumping into this, like, we like these people, you know, we like the business, but like, we're trying to reduce emissions, and we're investing in reducing emissions, so why, you know, let's put that expectation on our new commercial developments as well. Having said that, this is not in my ward, I know that Councilmember Bud has done a lot of study on this, and that you have your own reasons for supporting this project around having a robust Knollwood mall, providing opportunities for folks, and I know you share sustainability concerns as well, so I trust that you've evaluated it, and the fact that you're supporting it, and the fact that others are supporting it is enough for me tonight to also be in support. And again, won't be here, but I'd love to come and sit in the audience and watch us pass an ordinance that addresses the drive-through pickup window issue in St. Louis Park.
Thank you, council member. Any other, oh, go ahead, council member.
Yes, earlier when this proposal first came in, I had difficulty supporting the concept of a drive-through there, because like Councilmember Rog and like Councilmember Bodwin, I have real reservations about drive-throughs just because of the carbon emissions impact. This is kind of the best we can get in the current circumstance. I don't want to deny a reasonable use of your property either there, you've got this abandoned right-of-way, and we should rezone it anyway, or at least change the, you know, the future land use portion of it. So I'll be in support too. I'd join with my colleagues here in saying, I'd like to see us at some point soon do a study session around whether or not we should outlaw future drive-throughs completely, so I'd like to see us have some discussion about that, probably in the new year. Support this one also.
Okay, any others? Okay, I'll now take a motion, well, actually, there has been a motion, my bad, there has been a motion, a second, I will now move on to the votes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, that passes. Thank you, congratulations, and welcome to St. Louis Park. I hope it treats you well, and I hope you treat us well. Welcome again, yeah.
Mayor, while they're transitioning, may I, may I just say that I was tracking this conversation around kind of the changing landscape around carbon emissions and drive-throughs, and so even before it was asked for, I was tracking and reaching out to our sustainability staff who rightly didn't respond at 7:40 when I, or 7:30 when I messaged her. But I will see, you know, do we have data around this, around the changing landscape? What can we provide to be able to have council be able to have a really full-fledged conversation?
Okay, thank you. All right, next up is 7B, which is, I believe, the cannabinoid, cann, cann, cannabinoid? Yeah, cannabinoid, wow, okay, it's been a long night, whatever that is, it's a-
That's been a challenging, okay, that's been a challenging one for all of us.
Yes, yes, thank you. You have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor and council, Michael Pivik, property maintenance and licensing manager. I'll actually be presenting on the last three regular business items, and our first one being cannabinoids. The policy question here is, does council wish to proceed with the ordinance amendment proposed for the licensing of cannabinoid products? There's a lot of other terms. LPE is one currently being used by the OCM, which is the Office of Cannabis Management. LPE standing for lower potency hemp edibles. Might be helpful to just start with a little quick background on this, and that is, in 2022, the state of Minnesota legalized cannabinoid products. Now, just to be clear, this is our low-level hemp products, this is not cannabis. And so, it began, and in 2022 later, that same year, the city council approved an ordinance licensing the sale of cannabinoids, with intent there of overseeing the health and safety of the community, by being able to enforce locally the guidelines set forth by the state. And the following year, in 2023, the state of Minnesota then actually put in place a registration for the businesses that were selling hemp-derived cannabinoid products. And at that, excuse me, at that time, it was overseen by the Minnesota Department of Health. Fast forward to 2024, the Office of Cannabis Management then was established, and with the intent of the upcoming change with cannabis now being, coming to legalization, along with, of course, the existing cannabinoids, the intent there was to license everything, covering all of those cannabis and cannabinoid-related products. So here we are today, 2025, knowing that this was coming, the licensing of cannabinoids meant that cities that were doing any licensing would have to switch over. As they switched to licensing, we would have to forego our licensing requirement and switch over to registration to take place of what they were doing. So earlier in 2025, we did go through the process of approving, the council did the approval, of a retail registration which covered both of our lower potency hemp edibles and cannabis, okay? So we're all set and good with the registration, but we still had on record in ordinance that the licensing was still on the books. And as of this month, the state OCM has now made the conversion, they are now accepting licenses for those lower potency hemp edibles, and so now we need to just remove any and all ordinance language related to the licensing requirements that we have. Just as a note, we do have a registration fee for that, that is set by the OCM, it is $125 annually. And so I put to you the motion to approve the first reading, amending sections of Chapter 8 of the city code to be consistent with the changes in state statute related to cannabinoids, which is essentially to remove the licensing requirement from city ordinance. I'll stand for questions, thank you.
All right, thank you so much, Michael. Any questions? Yes, go ahead.
Quick question on that $125, is that, whose revenue is that?
The city's.
Okay, thank you.
You? Others? Go ahead, council member.
Second.
Moved in seconded, any comments? So funny, I was just asked about this over this weekend, and I was like, we are just talking about this on Monday, you should tune in, I hope they're tuning in. Any other comments?
Seems pretty straightforward.
Yeah, yeah, I would say so too. All right, I will now move on to the votes, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, the amendment passes. Let's move on to, thank you so much, Michael, let's move on to 7C, which is the first reading of amendments of Chapter 34 of the city code related to grass heights. Michael, you're back.
Thank you. Good evening again, Mayor and council members, Michael Pivik, property maintenance and licensing manager. This is quite straightforward, policy question being, does council wish to proceed with the ordinance amendment proposed for property maintenance regulations? So, as it turns out, back in 2024, the city council approved the amendment to change the grass height from six inches to eight inches. But in 2025 this year, it had come to staff's attention that there were more than just a few locations that we referenced the six inches to eight inches height. So unfortunately, we didn't catch quite all of them, and so this ordinance simply just brings all sections of the code into the same numbering of, I'm sorry, six inches to eight inches. So it was in Chapter 34, Section 34-111A and B, that we missed a couple of those height changes. So this would bring it into alignment with Chapter 6, as well as other sections of Chapter 34. So a motion to approve the first reading amending various sections of Chapter 34 of the city code would make this consistent throughout all the changes in the state statute, or, sorry, all the changes in city code to align with state statute and city code.
All right, thank you. Any motions or questions? Move approval?
Second.
All right, moved in seconded, any comments?
Yes, thank you for your work on this one too.
Councilmember Ross and I were just talking about this as well. Anywho, moving on to votes, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, seeing none, this amendment has passed as well. Moving on to the first reading of amendment, amendments to Chapter 8 of the city code related to rental licensing. Welcome back, Michael.
Thank you again. Good evening, Mayor and council, Michael Pivik, property maintenance and licensing manager. The policy question here is, does council wish to proceed with an amendment to Chapter 8, Section 8326 of the city code exempting relative homestead properties from non-owner-occupied licensing requirements? So there's been a number of times in the past years that staff have been approached, as well as council members, regarding the requirement for families who are housing other family members to have to get their property licensed. What that does to those family members is bring on added costs, and of course, time related to licensing requirements. They view it simply as no more than anybody else living as a family in their own home. The things that staff have noted here predominantly is that relative homestead properties do not generate tenant complaints. A son or daughter living in their parents' provided home are probably not going to call the city to say dad's not fixing the faucet that's leaking, so. Secondly, relative homesteads in general just haven't been as much of an issue, they're generally well-maintained, as much so as any other family living in any other property in the community. So to meet that exemption, for the relative homestead requirement, an owner must apply at Hennepin County and certify they meet the criteria, acknowledging all information is true and correct. So staff would verify, of course, that they have done so, and in that case, certainly any falsification of information would be subject to any fines or imprisonment, that's by the state. From a budgetary impact, there's not that many units, the overall estimated cost would be about $13,500, based on about 60 dwelling units, a very small percentage overall, and I might add as a side note, with the upcoming developments in the multifamily housing area, I mean, that will be more than offset on those costs. The timeline for this would be January 1st of 2026, that just hits our target timeframe for renewals. So as everybody sunsets at the end of this year, those who can then get in their applications, and of course, we would send that out as a notification before our renewal season, or before the end of the year, so they would have time to get that set, and then not have to, not have to apply for license in 2026. So a motion to approve the first reading, amending Chapter 8, Section 8-326 of the city code related to exceptions for licensing of non-owner-occupied properties, again, would allow those with relative homestead to not have to meet the licensing requirements. Thank you again, I'll stand for questions.
Any questions? Yep, go ahead, council member.
Thank you, Michael. As one of the council members who has heard from residents on this, I do appreciate this movement toward accommodation. Can you, and I apologize if- Uh, can you, and I apologize if I'm putting you on the spot with this question, how are we defining family or how does a county define family in terms of relative homestead?
I've got that. I just have to, okay. What is a qualifying relative? Qualifying relatives for both agricultural and residential homestead include parent, step-parent, child, step-child, grandparent, grandchild, brother, sister, uncle, aunt, nephew, or niece of the owner by blood or marriage.
Thank you. Um, and then you mentioned that, I love the analogy of they're not going to, son, the child's not going to call the city and say, mom or dad isn't taking care of this. Um, that does get me thinking though about the potential for, I know you also talked about fines and so on, the potential for abuse or how other, uh, you know, by, by landlords perhaps? Well, they have to get, okay, so they have to go through the county. So, small question, but like, would, would someone be able to report? Like, hey, I don't think this person's a relative and they're claiming this is a relative. Is that something you foresee as a problem? Or am I overthinking it?
Boy, you know, I guess it's just like breaking any other law. I mean, you take those risks and it's listed that, you know, you're subject to, you know, uh, imprisonment. I mean, so it is feasible, but, uh, understanding that reporting mechanism and how quickly and how much the, the county would act or the state would, because it would be a violation of the state code of revenue.
To save a few hundred bucks.
Right.
Yeah. Um, okay, great. Thank you.
Oh, go ahead, council member.
Thanks for this. Um, just to clarify, fees and license, uh, licensing and permit costs are, um, a self-sustaining piece of our budget, correct? So that any impact to this doesn't impact, uh, by design is not intended to impact, uh, property tax homeowners, right?
Right, especially the small of amount.
Right, right. So I just wanted to make sure that we are clear on that, that, that by design, the fees and licensing are, are self-sustaining and.
Yes, we'll continue as always as a fee for service.
Thank you, yep. That's much clearer than how I was saying it, a fee for service. Thanks.
Thank you. Any others?
And move approval.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Uh, any other conversations? No? All right, I'll move on to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, this, uh, amendment is approved as well. Thank you, Michael. Uh, with that, we are coming down to communications and announcements. Kim, you have the floor.
Thank you. I do have a few communications today. Um, first one is about some road closures coming up here off of Minnetonka Boulevard. We just learned today that starting on Wednesday through likely the end of October, um, Hennepin County is going to be closing parts of Minnetonka between Joppa and Cassa twenty-five. Um, so access to Minnetonka Boulevard from Inglewood Avenue will be closed for those weeks and Minnetonka Boulevard will be operating as a one-way street eastbound for those weeks. So again, I think the best way for people to be able to stay, um, up to date on these is to check out Hennepin County's, uh, website, also sign up for our listserv to, to get notices because they do come, um, with just sometimes, they give us as much notice as they can and sometimes that is a couple of days' notice. Um, then I have a couple, um, of, uh, just events that are coming up in the next few days here. So we have Walk the Park on Saturday, um, at nine-thirty over at Westwood Hills Nature Center. So you can go out for a nature walk. We have Howl Halloween, um, which is our annual dress-up-your-pet-for-costume contest. Um, we're at Wolf Park, also not a play on words, but super fun. On Sunday at noon, I was reminded that last year's winner was Sadie the Ice Cream Truck, whose human was an ice cream cone. So that's definitely worth coming out. Um, and then our forty-fourth annual Halloween party at Westwood Hills Nature Center is happening both on October seventeenth and eighteenth, six-thirty to nine P M. Um, it's a phenomenal event and pre-registration is required, so we'll get on that.
Well, thank you. It was pretty fun. I went there, uh, two Halloweens ago. It was pretty fun. Uh, I should get out there again. Uh, any others? Yes, go ahead. Is it sports-related?
No.
I'll defer to, to, uh, council member Rock. You had your hand up too. Okay, all right. Well, I did just want to throw out with the sun having set, the Jewish festival of Sukkot has started tonight. Is that what you were going to do?
No, but we do have a Sukkot.
Okay, yeah, so I just wanted to wish, uh, this, this commemorates, it's the festival of tabernacles or tents or booths. It commemorates the time the Israelites were wandering, um, in, in the desert, in the wilderness after the Exodus. Um, and, and so it's a very joyful, uh, time. You may see the Sukkot's up particularly in the Fern Hill and, uh, Lake Forest neighborhoods. Um, and so that's what that's about. So just, it's part of the Jewish high holiday season. Um, so just wanted to wish all our Jewish neighbors a blessed and joyful Sukkot.
Thanks, Paul. That's awesome.
Now I feel bad for asking if it was sports-related. Sorry.
I will say yesterday was the traditional day to put up Sukkot's and there was a lot of wind yesterday. So there was a lot of material blowing around the neighborhoods, plywood, canvas. Um, so I just want to mention two other things. Uh, there's going to be a pavement management project next year in Bronx Park and there's a open house for that on Wednesday night at Lenox Community Center at seven P M. There's also a pop-up event, uh, a week later on the fifteenth from four to six P M at Bronx Park. And there's also the St. Louis Park storytelling get-together by Friends of the Arts. It's, uh, Thursday night at the St. Louis Park Library. Super cool, actually. You could go to that sometime, six-thirty P M. Those are my two things.
Thank you. Any others? All right, seeing none, uh, then this meeting is adjourned. We will, we will begin shortly of our study session, um, actually over, right over there, but I'll give us like a quick three-minute break so that we can go do our things and then we'll come back right over there.
Over there. All right. Have guests for both items.
Yes, so please hurry. Yes.